I'm a Marietta resident, and in fact, I live down the street from Mr. Difley. I've been here since 1987. I love the teachers and the administration of the board, just off the top. My shirt says everything I want to talk about tonight: Free Hong Kong. Now, what we are in Hong Kong, and what's going on is oppression. In China, they know what happened in China, and they don't want the same thing to happen to them. We don't want the same thing to happen to us that happened, it's happened in China. And so, they're actually trying to emulate us by flying our flag, and they don't know that we're actually going through the same sort of problem with free speech. What I'm asking the board to do is open up the campuses to say, "I'm a Republican, you know, person, and I'd like to have somebody be able to be on one side, Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, Green Party, and have an open debate." That should be done, because by the time eighteen, you're eighteen years old, you're voting. So, you need to know these topics, and a lot of people do not even know what they're voting on. They don't have a clue what the parties stand for. So, that was one of the issues that I wanted to bring up. Also, all, you know, like, kind of library books should have, I've heard history books have start, one person told me starts, US History Starts at the Civil War? No, it starts in the Revolutionary War. But I heard that book is out there. So, I like to see these books, so I can read them in the library, if it's possible. Free speech, I heard recently that the teachers allowed the students to go out for climate change. Yeah, against climate change, where are they, against the man-made climate change, or the climate change done by volcanoes and everything like that? So, I just hear them in the back, but that's okay. We can have a free discourse. I'd like to say, that I like to talk about, have a free discourse of debates, that students like I, at my age, we had to take a topic and talk about it, and take positions maybe we didn't like. And this was in high school, also in college, and we weren't booed, we weren't yelled at, nobody took offense at what we talked about. In fact, some people asked me, "What was your real position on that?" And I said, "I wouldn't, I won't tell you," for instance, in one class that I had. So, I think that should be something we should, if it's not already, and maybe you can tell me it's happening already, but it should be happening right now. I had, as a young man, I went through the communist countries, and I went through the Soviet Union, and I understand what it's like to be oppressed. I've had people talk to me in whispers, and worry about, and walking away from me because they were worried about being arrested. So, I was worried about being arrested. I've had machine guns pushed at me and everything else. So, anyway, freedom is what we need, freedom is only what we've got to have, and we need it in our schools, and that has to start in Marietta. Thank you.
I'll cut out all the good stuff. Okay.
It's a total of
I know it, so forget it.
...
Okay. Hey, I'm from, down from Utah, 650 miles to come down here at my daughter's request, but we were coming anyway, so don't feel bad. I come from a school district that graduated 22 seniors last year, 400 people in our town, so this is like a big deal here. But, years ago, I, we got requested to go to our nephew's GSA, you might remember it, El Medina High School, gay straight alliance, and which we could not support. So, we went down to San Diego to a love one-out, which is the opposition to that, and listened to people that came out of the gay community and got their input, like, average age was 26 to survive to. AIDS was rampant back then. All that came through in my nephew's life. At two, he was casting spells on the other students in the class. It was a bizarre time, but he beat the odds. He made it to 27 years old before he hung himself. Full-blown AIDS, all the bad stuff that was going on in those days, in and out of jail, all the rest of it. Told my daughter at one point, he had to quit having sex with married men because he had full-blown AIDS. So, this was our family's exposure. We just found out today, his sister, who's been in a group home for 20 years, just got hit crossing Cattella Avenue in Anon. So, she's probably not going to make it much either, but she's been confused for most of her life. So, I'm just asking, because I'm hearing stuff, and I'm getting stuff in Utah, videotapes and stuff of what's going on here. Well, I don't know if it's here. You guys look pretty squared away to me. I know you got good teachers. But I'm concerned, because I'm hearing there's stuff going on that we can opt kids out of, and I'm hearing stuff that we can't opt kids out of. So, I would like to meet with somebody to ultimately decide if I'm going to live in Marietta, where we have a house, or if I'm going to go back to Utah, where I have 2,200 miles of riding trails out my backdoor, elk, deer hunting, fishing. I don't want to be my golden years spent right here fighting you guys, but I will, for my grandchildren, I will. I want to see some port from you guys, for people that know Jesus and aren't into this stuff. I'm not a Nickelation. You can look it up in Revelation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I am here to speak in support of parents' rights. Do we have anybody here who is supporting parents' rights? Okay, so we have some folks here supporting parents' rights. Let me just say that I speak on the topic tonight, coming as a clinic administrator over a licensed pregnancy clinic that I operated for five years here in Riverside County, and it was an honor to do that. But when we think about parents' rights, we have, you're going to hear tonight, the fact that anytime there's risk that is being presented to our children here in this district, there should be a requisite choice that goes along with that risk. And if there's a choice because of the risk, that means that parents, based on parents' rights, ought to be engaged in the process of making that choice in consultation with their child. So, see, that should be a fair process there. So, one specific topic I want to talk about tonight relates to a process called informed consent. Informed consent is a medical process whereby a patient is given consent to a medical professional, typically a physician, in order to perform a procedure. And the informed part of that means that the requisite benefits and risks of that procedure is gone over by the patient, and the patient approves of that. In particular, I know that it is legal in the state of California for a minor to get an abortion. We are not here tonight, I am not here tonight, to ask the school board to engage in the legality or illegality of whether a minor can get an abortion. I think personally, that that is an unconscionable and evil act that ends the innocent life of a child. However, to the extent that the school district or personnel are engaging in assisting in the process of a minor going to get an abortion, particularly during school hours, ought not to be so. And because it involves risk, what I'm holding here is a typical consent for medical or surgical care and treatment. This is a document that everybody here can relate to. Anytime you go to a doctor and get a procedure, you're going to be having to review what those benefits and risks are. And in particular, and you can go on Planned Parenthood's own website to see that risks that they outline are blood clots in your uterus, very heavy bleeding, infection, injury to your cervix, uterus or other organs, allergic reaction to medication, and it even goes on to say on the Planned Parenthood website that there's serious or even life-threatening risks to a woman or a girl. So, thank you.
Thank you, board members. It's a pleasure to be up here to speak with you tonight. My name is Todd Donahue. I'm a chiropractor, practicing for 20 years in Marietta. I am a board-certified pediatric and prenatal chiropractic specialist, the only one in Riverside County. I've been serving this community, as I say, for 20 years. I've been serving the school district as well, in the capacity of doing scoliosis screenings for our middle school aged, young, pre-teens, I suppose we'll call them. We've also been instrumental with another group of chiropractors in training our school nurses and their staff in doing these scoliosis screenings. It's been a pleasure to serve this community for many, many years now. I've been asked to come up and discuss this continued parental rights issue that we're discussing tonight. My job is to discuss risk when it comes to the vaccination schedule that our children are being imposed upon them. I want to just really quickly discuss information with regards to vital and important facts on the subject. I'm not here to debate the effectiveness of vaccination. I'm not here to talk as an anti-vaxer or a pro-vaxer. My job has always been to share with my patients just simple facts. It's important that parents be involved in the decision-making process, and it's important that parents be given the educational material that they require in order to make educated choices. The challenge that I see on this vaccination subject that's been a problem for many, many years is simply that parents are not given the educational opportunity. They're told the mantra over and over and over by Western medicine, vaccines are 100% safe for 100% of the population, 100% of the time. And if you question that, well, they're going to crush you. I'm here to say simply that there are risks, and I want to share those things with you very quickly. Right now, the CDC schedule includes 70 vaccine doses by the age of 18. Thirty-two of them are to be administered by the age of 1. Fifty-one injections total, and as many as nine in one day, are deemed safe. Sadly, this is simply not the case. In July of 2016, Senate Bill 277 went into effect and effectively removed completely both religious and personal belief exemptions to vaccination. Prior to that time, you could flip over the blue vaccine card that we all had to fill out for school administrators, say, "My kid's not vaccinated." That wasn't two and a half minutes ago. Very quickly, vaccine events, adverse events reporting system, 2,220,600 adverse events reported since the beginning of that system, $4 billion has been paid out. There are clear risks. I've got a stack of vaccine inserts that come with the vaccines from the manufacturers denoting those risks in great detail. And I will also suggest
I'm not even going to take you off, but I must say, we were prepared all the others.
Where there is risk, there must be a choice. Very simple. That's our position. Risk must include a choice. Please take a moment to think about this.
My name is John Andrews. I'm a citizen, a husband, and a father. Thanks for having me here today. One of the concerns parents have is a California law that requires schools to excuse students for certain medical appointments. These appointments include gender transition therapy, and schools are not required to notify parents when a child leaves campus to transition from one sex to the next. I think it's important for the board, and school administrators, to consider the facts about the gender transition process before accepting this California law. This process is severe. Here are some of the facts. Often, kids grow out of the gender confusion stage. However, some change their sex by way of puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and surgical modifications. Puberty blockers are chemicals given to children as young as eight. They lead to infertility and have many sexual dysfunctions, including the loss of sexual sensation and the inability to have an orgasm when they get older. The chemicals involved in the transition only worsen the patient's neuro- psychological state as anxiety and depression are common side effects of the medications used. Many are not FDA-approved. Brain development for these kids is disrupted as well, especially those associated with sex-based hormones. Same with bone development. Boys are given high doses of estrogen. Girls are given high doses of testosterone. The effects of these doses will continue through the life of the patient, making him or her permanently dependent on the medical industry and Big Pharma. After all this, you would think happiness would follow when transition is complete, and it's simply not the case. Suicide and suicide attempts amongst trans youth is considerably higher than cisgender youth. As a parent of two children and a citizen of this community, I reject the California law that mandates schools to remain silent when children leave campus to have these procedures done. Gender transition therapy, gender transition therapy is severe with high risk. Because of this, we insist that the choice to pursue such procedures be left to the parent, not the child. We insist that you secure our rights, our parent rights. Furthermore...
Good time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Desiree Carraro. I'm with Tyler and Bersh and Advocates for Faith and Freedom. Bob Tyler, who many of you know, has drafted a letter from Tyler and Bersh and Advocates for Faith and Freedom, and I'm going to read it. He's out of the country right now. And it starts, "Dear honorable board members and superintendent, I'm a partner in a Marietta law firm, Tyler and Bersh LLP, and president of a nonprofit law firm, Advocates for Faith and Freedom. We believe that parents have the fundamental right to direct the education and upbringing of their own children. This fundamental right has been repeatedly recognized and protected by the United States Supreme Court. As constitutional attorneys, our mission is to defend and uphold this right, especially in our local community. Advocates for Faith and Freedom supports our watch sanctuary school district policy because it's in line with constitutional parental rights." And he goes on to say, "I write this letter to offer pro bono legal service to the district and pro bono defense to any issues that arise concerning parental rights. Marietta Valley Unified School District board members can vote to become a sanctuary school district, knowing that they have a local law firm with eight lawyers who stand ready to defend the board on the legal front." "We also want to offer legal support to any and all individual board members, administrators, and teachers who want to protect parental rights." And finally, Bob wants to thank all of you for your dedication and service in public education, and we're praying for you as you continue to serve the children in our public school.
It's great to see so many people out here that are coming out to support the notion of parental rights and the importance of parental rights as it relates to the relationship parents have to their school district here and throughout the state. It has been my privilege and honor, as a member of the media, to sit behind a microphone, and over the past four years, to report to the community what is unfolding in this state as it relates to the topic that you have an opportunity to weigh in on tonight. As this radio talk show host, I'm often asked to go out into the community to talk to groups and members of the community and address a variety of different issues. Lately, one of those questions that I ask at the beginning of when I speak is, "Are parents' rights unalienable?" Almost 100% of every room raises their hands and says, "Yes, parents' rights are unalienable." And then I let them know that a video exists of the ACLU instructing school districts throughout Riverside County how to remove students from school and take them to Planned Parenthood for an abortion, and then how to legally cover it up. That is not standing for parental rights. You all have an opportunity tonight. An agenda item has been placed on the board, on the agenda tonight for you all to weigh in and let this community, the stakeholders, teachers, students know that you will stand for parental rights. Will you take that vote tonight? That's the question. Will you stand up for parental rights and declare that Marietta is a sanctuary school district? That vote has been put on this agenda for a purpose. Over 100 school districts throughout this state have made the decision to be sanctuary schools as it relates to immigration status. What we're talking about here, though, is even more fundamental than that. It strikes to the basic issue of whether or not parents have the right to dictate the outcomes for their children. And right now, the ACLU says it's perfectly legal for you to take children out of this, out of school districts around the state, take them to Planned Parenthood for an abortion. You guys have the opportunity to protect the parents in this school district.
Hey there. So, I'm Hunter Erickson. I'm a high schooler. I just turned 18. And I'm here to denounce the sex education that I cannot opt out of and to affirm the parental rights of my parents and the children in this school. In 1794, the first domestic tax in America was levied against whiskey producers. I loved the response of the farmers. They asked the government what they were going to get in response, and in return for the taxes they were paying. The government told them that they'd get nothing, that the money would be used for federal spending. No tangible product or service would be given in return. And so, what did these men do? They refused to pay it. These men wouldn't be forced to pay for a product they weren't given. Fast forward to 1977, pro-life Americans were being forced to pay for what they know now and then to be the murder of innocent children. They refused to fund the death of American and foreign children. So, what did they do? Congressman Henry Hyde introduced and passed the Hyde Amendment, barring the use of taxpayer dollars to fund abortions. This man, his constituents, and his supporters refused to pay for a product that they knew was a grave and moral evil. It's 2019 now, and something very similar has happened. Californians are being forced to pay for a product that they're not being given, and instead, they're being forced to pay for a product that they know and believe to be evil while having their parental liberties stripped away. Californians are being forced to pay for an education that they're not receiving. The introduction of this sexual education has stripped public education of its value, and children of their innocence, and parents of their rights. Californians are being forced to pay for an education that they know and believe to be evil, and it is a violation of their religious beliefs. So, how does this episode in history end? Well, it ends in one of two ways. It ends either when you give us the product that we're paying for, you have an opportunity to help with this, or it ends when we don't pay for what we're not being given, and what we know is an evil. This country, the United States of America, and the children in it belong to us, not to the sick bureaucrats pushing this agenda. It's time that we take them back. They're our children, not yours. Either we get the product that we pay for, or we don't pay.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm going to speak fast, because I know I only have two and a half minutes. I'm a parent of three Marietta Valley Unified current and former students, one who has graduated, and two who are currently in middle school. I am also a teacher in a neighboring district. As a teacher, one of my most important jobs is to be an advocate for students, and as a parent, it is important for me to, that my children have the right to learn about people from all walks of life and to learn about multiple perspectives. Mr. Thompson, I believe, is asking you to become a sanctuary school, which is a term that he has made up to represent a portion of the viewpoints in this community. I know there is a lot of supporters here, but it does not represent everyone here. While I don't anticipate you will accept his proposal that he has based on parental rights, I do want to take a moment to discuss students' rights. Students have the right to learn that there are many perspectives in this world, and many different kinds of families, and what is most important is that students have a right to learn in a safe and an inclusive environment. A survey of teens conducted by the Human Rights Foundation and the University of Connecticut founded that LGBTQ youth are not only experiencing heartbreaking levels of stress, anxiety, and rejection, but also overwhelmingly feel unsafe in their own school classrooms. LGBTQ young people who participated in the survey also made it very clear that supportive families and inclusive schools are key to their success and well-being. During the time of this survey in 2018, only 26% say they always feel safe in their school classroom, and just 5% say that all teachers and school staff are supportive of LGBTQ people. According to the One Archive Foundation, students in schools with an LGBTQ inclusive curriculum are half as likely to experience victimization because of gender expression and sexual orientation, and twice as likely to have accepting classmates, all because of an inclusive curriculum. In essence, my concern here tonight is not that you will become a sanctuary school district, as I don't see this as likely, but I do hope that you will see two things. The views represented here do not represent this entire community. This is a public school district that represents the public, not just one specific type of family, or belief system, or religion. Currently, I've not seen the Fair Act actually being carried out in my daughter's classroom. What will you do to make sure that there is a study of the role and contributions of both men and women, Native Americans, African Americans, Mexican Americans, Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, LGBTQ individuals? What will you do to train and implement the Fair Act? Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Christian Edwards. I am a husband, and a father, and above all, a follower of Jesus Christ. I am here tonight to advocate for my parental rights. As of now, my daughter will be unable to attend public schools because of mandatory vaccination laws. Currently, our country has paid over $4 billion to people who have been injured by vaccines, because the manufacturers are immune to liability for their products. It is my belief, where there is risk, there must be a choice. It is also my belief that as a follower of Christ, I must not be required to inject my child with DNA from aborted fetuses. If Marietta School District were to become a sanctuary school district, my daughter and many other childrens, the parents and believers who share my belief, will be able to send their children to school. It is my parental right to choose what is best for my daughter. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kelly, members of the board, for hearing me tonight. I want to start off by saying I think we live in a great community. I love the city of Marietta. I love the students and the teachers, although I don't agree with all of them. I love the teachers of the Marietta School District. I came here to Marietta in the mid-'80s, so I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot of change. I am the oldest of my mother's eight children. I have five siblings that started off in the Marietta School District in kindergarten, and five of them went kindergarten through high school, and they loved their experience. I now have two grown children. I've raised my children here in Marietta as well. Both of them attended the Marietta School District, and I love this city. I love this school district. People have come from all over the nation to live here in Marietta, because Marietta is a great place to live. And what we're asking you tonight as a board is to continue that great legacy of this great city, that we would continue to be the gem of the valley that we've been known to be, and that our city would be the first school district in our state to declare itself a sanctuary school district for parental I have spoken with some of the board members, and I do believe that we all want the same thing, a safe environment, an inclusive environment for our children, and a place where parents can determine what is good for their own children. Granted, our approach has been different. In fact, I might say drastically different, but I still think we want the same thing. The approach of the school district thus far has been, quote, "fly under the radar." I'm here to tell you tonight that that approach has not worked. That approach will not work moving forward. It is too late for that. Now, we understand your hands are tied as a board, because you're just following the law. So, let me help untie your hands this evening. I'm going to untie your hands by reminding you of the oath that each of you took, an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. We have a domestic enemy that is attacking our liberties in this state of California. It's attacking our rights as parents, and it seeks to destroy the very fabric of our families. I'd like to speak to you about some of those attacks that I'd like to speak to you about some of those attacks that have been coming our way. First, the requirement of certain vaccinations to attend public schools has now been forced on families. The rights of the parents have been removed. And I'm not here tonight to debate whether or not vaccines are good or bad, or whether kids should have them or not. We're asking you to protect our teachers, our students, our parents by refusing to enforce any law requiring any medical procedure, vaccine or otherwise. Such laws violate our rights as parents, and we want sanctuary in Marietta. In a letter dated March 1st from the Marietta School District to me, I was told that, quote, "The district is not at liberty to choose which laws it complies with. We would encourage you to bring your concerns to the legislature." I did that. I was up in Sacramento multiple times. I didn't see any of you with me. I did speak with our Assemblywoman, Melissa Melendez. I don't have to go very far with her. She already voted against the things that we're against. She is for parental rights. However, she is the vast minority of our Assembly, of the Legislature. We, as a community, voted for you, and you are in office because of us. And there's a little thing in America known as local control. In the context of public schools, local control is the belief that the people closest to the students and most knowledgeable about the school district and its community will be the most invested in the welfare and success of its teachers, its students, and its families. And because of that, they are the best ones for making important decisions about the district's operation, leadership, staffing, academics, teaching, and improvement, not the supermajority in the state legislature who do not live in our community or share in our community values. Your letter to me stated that because of ED Code 51944, teachers and students would be required to affirmatively discuss things like the gender spectrum. This law forces the vast majority of teachers and students to violate their conscience and/or their religious conviction. It rids our great school district of diversity of thought, which is a super important thing for us, and it violates the First Amendment rights of our teachers and students. This is cultural Marxism at its finest, people. We are asking you to protect our teachers, our students, and our parents by refusing to enforce ED Code 51944 in our district. Your letter also states that by giving parents advance notice and a parental right to opt out of content outside the context of sexual health, quote, "runs afoul of anti-discrimination laws." And you quoted ED Code 220. You also said it would violate ED Code 51932B. Well then, if that's what it means, we're gonna say this: Secure our parental rights. We're asking you to protect our teachers, our students, our parents, and refuse to enforce ED Code 220 or 51932B in our district. Your letter also stated that it was referencing the Fair Act and ED Code 51204.5, and says that parents do not have the right to opt their children out of the instruction. The Fair Act stands for FAIR, ACCURATE, INCLUSIVE, AND RESPECTFUL, yet it excludes the values of this community and it disrespects the very fundamental rights of parents. So we're asking you to protect our teachers, our students, and our parents by refusing to enforce the Fair Act or ED Code 51204.5 in our district. One final thing from your letter, it said this: Parents do have the right to control and dictate their child's education and have no obligation to attend public school as long as they otherwise comply with compulsory education requirements by selecting a private school or other educational program outside the public school structure. With all due respect, board members, I think you are forgetting some very important things about our community. We are a bedroom community. Parents are on the freeway. They're on the 91 freeway. They're on the freeway two hours, four hours a day trying to feed their family. There aren't enough public, or private schools in our valley here. They can't take time off of work to homeschool their children. Public school is the option that they have. So for you to say, "If they want their parents' rights, they're just gonna have to go to private school or homeschool their kids," that is unacceptable to our community, completely unacceptable. To be clear, we are not asking that you vote on, what we're not asking that you vote on is a policy that says children should not get vaccinated, although many people here tonight do feel that way. What we're asking is, do you make Marietta a sanctuary where parents have the right to decide that they want to vaccinate their child? And after all, it is their child, not the state's child. What we are not asking you to vote on tonight is a policy that says children should not get abortions, although many people here tonight do feel that way. We're asking that you make Marietta a sanctuary where parents have the right to walk their child through the decision-making process of whether or not they want to take another human life. That's what we're asking for. We are not asking you to vote on a policy that says children should not undergo trans therapy, although many people tonight feel that way. We're asking that you make Marietta a sanctuary where parents have the right to walk their child through a decision-making process of life-altering choice, and that you allow parents to teach their children about social issues such as the very science fiction concept of gender spectrum. What we're asking you for tonight is to let the parents be parents. I said that Marietta is a wonderful place to live, and I firmly believe that. I think that what we need to do is continue that legacy of being a place that people desire to live in. Let Marietta be a beacon of hope for people in California, because so many people wanna leave California because their rights are getting stripped away. Let Marietta be the place that people wanna be. It's gonna drive up our property values. It's gonna be this beacon of light to the entire state. And I'll tell you this, I don't know if what I'm doing is right. Okay, you guys have had your method of trying to protect our parents' rights, but they're going away, and you know it, and you told me in the letter that you gave me. And I saw a lot of teachers here tonight just appalled at what they've heard, like somehow kids are gonna be allowed to go get abortions? It is the law, teachers. It's the law that kids can go get an abortion without the parents knowing. Don't tell me it's not. It absolutely is. Ask them. It absolutely is. Did you know that the Marietta School District is sending people to go, yes, they have, don't say no, they're not, you haven't even heard what I have to say. The Marietta Teach, the Marietta School District is sending people to classes to learn how to implement these types of processes. And if you don't believe me, go to arwatchnow.com and watch the video. We got them undercover. It's absolutely true.
On the request that you heard from Mr. Thompson, I have a very short set of slides that I would like to share with you as we address the topic. Okay, so what we're gonna talk through very quickly is what is this proposal that's being made? Talk a little bit about the legal authority of the school board as it relates to the proposal that's being made, and then make some recommendations or share some concluding thoughts with you all before you move into the next phase of this discussion. So first of all, how do we make sense of what the request is that's being made? As you're aware, that when a subject falls within the jurisdiction of a school board, a member of the community can request that the item be put on a school board agenda for discussion or deliberation. In this case, we've had a community member request that the district become a Sanctuary School District, and although that topic doesn't actually, or that phrase doesn't have any actual legal definition, the information from the community members states that what they're requesting, and I think Mr. Thompson made it pretty clear in his remarks, is that the Marietta Valley Unified School District reject or refuse to enforce certain state and federal laws pertaining to parental rights, which will enable parents to better or more thoroughly direct educational content from their children's schooling. You heard from both Mr. Thompson as well as a variety of community members speak to a wide range of concerns, a wide variety of topics, and we'll not get into the detail of those particular topics or those particular policies or laws, but more how the school board's authority relates to the actual request at hand. So how do we make sense of this request? It starts really with an understanding of the legal authority of a school board. In California, it's the legislature that has what we call a plenary power over public schools. And in California, we have an education code, it's this thing. It tells boards and school districts how to conduct public education in California. School districts do, however, have what we call in California the Permissive Code, which is expressed in Education Code, Section 35160, that gives boards a certain amount of latitude for conducting or carrying out their own local initiatives, programs, and activities, but there is a caveat, and that is that all of those activities that they conduct cannot be in conflict with and consistent with or preempted by existing laws. And so boards often really use board bylaws or board policies to sort of fill in the places where the ED Code doesn't mandate what we do. However, no matter what, board policies always have to comply with existing laws. So the board does have considerable discretion in developing some school programs as long as it follows existing law, and that's an important, basic kind of understanding that you should have about the legal authority of the school board. Furthermore, the California Constitution imposes on school board members that they agree to affirm those duties, which is what they do when they take their oath of office. So every board member takes an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the US, of the United States and the state of California, and their true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of both the United States and the state of California. And the oath that every board member takes also states that the board member will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. So taken together, really what all this means is that the Marietta Valley Unified School District Board must follow existing laws until a court decides otherwise or until the law is changed through the legislature or initiative process, and that includes state mandated curriculum and parental notification and opt-out rights. The school board, as I mentioned, also has a variety of board policies that implement the state and federal law and also implement those sort of locally controlled and locally made decisions. And it's within that framework that the Marietta Valley School District has an extensive network of policies that safeguard and maximize parental rights within the existing legal framework. The district has always been very aggressive about making sure that parents do have the maximum kinds of rights that they can within the existing framework of the law. So in conclusion, the school board members have a responsibility to uphold their oath of office, and the school board and the district have a responsibility to uphold the state and federal laws and to comply with board policies. And it's not the policies themselves, or the district's compliance with the law, or whether the policies comply with the law or not, that is being asserted here tonight. So with that, that concludes my informal remarks. I'll turn it back to the school board for any further discussions or deliberations that you would like.
Thank you. This time, all in a motion to discuss this item and consider acting on it. Do we have a motion?
Come on. Let's go.
Hearing done.
Time for a recall.
We proceed to item B, consent calendar.
May I have a parental rights? Time for a recall. Parental rights. We'll see on the campaign. Nothing, huh? Two second, nothing. Come on, Usher, man up. Sacked up, Usher. Come on.
Hearing done.
Any strong Christian men in the room? Everybody on that back row. Sanctuary schools.
We'll have a motion.
Parental rights.
I'll serve. By Mrs. Long, and seconded by Mr. Rivas. Any comments on the consent calendar? Which includes, by the way, things like donations and other things that occur every month for all should be grateful. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing done, moving on to E, Human Resources.
We.
What a hell of personnel.
We.
We, the people, are watching.
We.
This is an action item.
I'll move here.
We're holding liable.
Seconded by Mrs. Monti.